I call to order the common council of the city of Tell City. Would you all please stand for the pledge to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next item will be the adoption of the agenda. If anyone has anything they'd like to add to it. I don't have anything at this time. Seeing none, I'll need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Brian, second by Larry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. The presentation of minutes of the last month, you should have copies of those in your folder and online. I didn't see anything. Did you see anything, Larry?
I did not. September 3rd, September the 5th, and September the 10th. Is that iconic?
Correct. Yes.
I reviewed them all. I didn't have any. I don't have any corrections.
Motion to adopt the minutes from last month.
Sure.
Motion by Mike, and need a second.
Second.
Second by Phillip. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those polled, minutes carried. Motion carried. Public hearing 2025 budget. Ms. Berger.
Okay, we will have to, how do I word that, Jim?
Well, what we're doing is recessing our regular council meeting and calling to order a public hearing on the 2025 budget. So, I don't think we need a motion to do that. We're just making the statement that that's what we are doing.
Okay.
And what this evening is, is the public hearing on the budgets. If there is anyone from the public here that was needing to, had any comments on the city's budgets for next year, this is the time that they would make any comments, or if council members had any other comments or anything on the budget. And then it will be adopted at your next meeting in October.
Okay.
And then submitted to the, to the state for approval.
I know Connie's revitalized what we discussed and had to change a few things, but there's no major changes to the budget.
Correct. Correct. There was not.
So.
No.
Any comment from citizens?
Yes.
Come on up if you want to speak. State your name and address, correct?
Name and address, yes.
Hi, Anne Kessinger. Address is 35 William Tell Boulevard, Tell City.
Okay.
All right. Um, well, here we go. I'm manager of Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. I'm also here with my boss, Molly Hagman. She's the director. And while we do have questions concerning plans procedures in place for animal welfare in this county, we recognize this meeting is about budget, so we plan to only ask questions surrounding our allowance from Tell City. On September 13th, Molly was sent an email stating that our request for an increase to our funding by $15,000 was not fully approved. In the email, it stated that we would receive an increase of $1,000, and then after nine months, the excess amount of $14,000 would be reconsidered. The email also requested to see our financial information surrounding our donation amounts. And we want to be very clear when we say we have zero issues with providing that information to you. We've brought it with us tonight. Our questions surrounding this decision are as follows. First and foremost, we would like to know why the entire amount was not approved. We assume there's an explanation, and that explanation has not yet been offered to us. Our next question is why nine months? What does the council expect to see in nine months that will help them either approve or deny the excess $14,000? How did you come up with the nine-month timeframe? Next, we would like to know how this offer has even come about when we are on a 12-month contract with the city of Tell City. You're offering $36,000 for nine months instead of $50,000 for 12 months. What will happen with the extra four months if our funding is denied after reconsideration? We are happy to provide donation amounts. However, I think it goes without saying that we cannot depend on any certain donation amount, and we cannot factor in donations as a way to budget for the care of animals, payroll, or other operating costs. Furthermore, we would like to plan on using donation amounts for things outside of basic care and operating costs. We are striving to be an asset to this community outside of housing and adopting out animals. But without guaranteed funding for the basics, it is difficult to plan for community events or outreach. And that basically wraps it up. I would invite any questions while I'm up here, if you have any, or if you'd like to do those later.
Well, the council approved nine months, and at that rate, and we would claim, not claim, we said we would revisit it. We were kind of waiting to see what the county funded.
Okay.
That's why we went to that. I don't know what they've done. I have no idea.
Well, they have accepted our...
Proposed.
Yeah.
What did you ask for, from the county?
The same amount, $50,000.
$50,000. And they approved that?
They did.
Okay. That was discussed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry. I know you know a lot about that.
No, that's, that's correct. That was one of the reasons.
And we wanted to see where we were at budget-wise at the end of nine months, and I think we'll be okay, but we just kind of wanted to see, and we wanted to see where the money and this and that was going. And I don't think we've received that documentation yet.
To my knowledge, we haven't. And to clarify, and you mentioned about four months, there's actually three months.
Oh, okay.
Remaining. Okay. And the reason we came up with $36,000 was to put you on a schedule where, I mean, $4,000 a month times 12 is $48,000. So, we were just rounding off to base it on a $50,000 or a $48,000 a year budget for 12 months. But we didn't know what the county was doing at that time, and we even received no information as far as revenue that you received. You've done a great job giving us expenditures and your proposed budget and everything, but we've not seen any revenues. Okay. So, I think the council feels, I feel, and I'll speak for myself, uncomfortable granting you an increase like that until we see some of the revenue. And I mean, we're pleased with the operation of the shelter, you know? And I think when we reach, you know, and we may even get into these discussions before the nine months, way before the nine months is over, probably in June or July. But even to increase it to $36,000, we had to cut something else by $1,000, okay? So, we would have had to cut some other line item by another $14,000 to fund it fully at $50,000. So, we will know, be in a much better position to know financially where we stand next year, and whether we can continue the remaining three months at that level.
Okay.
Okay. The intention was never to give you $36,000 for the whole year. Okay? And it was never to cut you off at the end of nine months. That was not the intention. The intention was to, for us to be able to look at some of this information and balance it against all of our other needs, and hopefully be able to reach that $50,000 figure for a whole year.
So, what I'm hearing is that you're giving us $36,000 for nine months, or this is proposed, is $36,000 for nine months, and then you do not know for the extra three months how much we will get at all?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I think that that wraps it up for me.
Okay.
So now, may I have some comments?
Yes, you can. Come on up. Please state your name. We know for the public.
My name is Molly Hagman. I'm the director of Rivers Edge Animal Shelter. I live in Leopold, Indiana, so I'm not a Tell City resident. You just clarified that you're going to fund for nine months. I'm going to clarify, we're on a year contract. So, to me, you're breaching our contract.
No, what?
Because you're not funding us per the contract.
This contract takes, the contract that you're on expires at the end of 2024.
And are we, is it automatically renewed, just as the county is, or am I going to have to come back here?
I don't think it says it's automatic.
How is...
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the existing contract, which I don't have in front of me. If it, if it doesn't have language that automatically renews it, then it would not automatically be renewed.
I don't know.
Now, I'm, what I'm hearing is that the intention is to fully fund for the year, but because of some of the unknowns at the time they were having their budget workshops, they weren't able to do that. So, if I'm hearing right, I'm also hearing a lean towards funding it when the opportunity becomes. And it's clarified now, at the time they were workshopping this, they didn't know that the county was going to fully fund. So, at least we do now have that certainty. But to answer the question, I'd have to look at the existing contract.
Okay. Why do we rely so heavily on what the county's doing?
Because it's a county responsibility. Legally, it is county responsibility.
Correct.
And we've been through this discussion, and I know you don't agree with it, but Tell City taxpayers pay county taxes, they pay city taxes. Animal control is a county responsibility.
There is no animal control, Larry.
No, the animal shelter is part of the...
That, I mean, and that's part of the problem as well. There's no animal control.
It's a county responsibility.
Okay, but the city is utilizing those resources.
Well...
I mean, we can go back and forth all day long. If you all and I have been very transparent with every one of you on this board, if you have questions, if you want documentation, all you have to do is ask. When you all came to the shelter in March, I provided profit and loss. I provided revenue. You looked at it, Charlie Baumeister looked at it. No one else looked at it. There's been no other request since then. I come and I present my budget, and now I'm getting kicked back that you all have not been provided proper documentation. You haven't asked. I have tonight what you're wanting, and I can, I can, donations, that's what's holding this up. You want to know what donations are?
I don't want to discuss it tonight, Molly.
So, what, then when do we want to discuss it? Because that's when the budget, this is the budget, and this is the donations what's holding it up. So, when do we want to discuss this?
It's, it's not just donations, it's revenue.
Okay. I have my revenue report. When would you, would you like to see that right now?
No.
Okay, so we, we have it, but we don't want to see it. So, when would you like to see that?
I think, didn't Mayor Chris ask you to email that stuff? He relayed to me, and we haven't received that.
I am not emailing my financial documentation. That's why I'm here at this meeting, and I have my financial documentation.
Okay. I think this council...
So, if you would like to see it...
I would, I think between January and our nine months is up, we need to review that.
Review what?
What your revenues are for that nine months.
I have it right here, and now you're telling me you don't want to see it?
No, no, you're not listening. We're going to fund it, we're going, they agreed, the council agreed to send you money every month. Am I correct, Connie?
Correct.
Instead of direct $50,000 payment. We said, no, we're going to give you...
I, that's not, I didn't want a direct $50,000 payment.
Well, that's what the council agreed on.
Connie sends a monthly payment now. I send an invoice every month. That's, that's how I anticipated this would continue. I would continue to send a monthly invoice once the budget was approved, and that would, it would continue the same way. Also, when you're saying that you approved us for $36,000, and it's going to be $4,000 a month, that is less than what we are currently receiving from you.
No, no.
Yes, it is.
Well...
No, it isn't.
We get $4,375 a month from Tell City currently. We will now be getting $375 less. I know that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but in my world, in the animal shelter world, it is a lot of money. It's several spay and neuters. It's cat litter for four months. That's how tight of a ship and how tight the budget is. So, yes, $375 is a lot of money to me, and it's going to be less now for nine months. So, now I'm going to have to make up that $375 on top of what I already have to make up.
What, I wasn't on the council last year. What did the council fund last year?
$35,000.
$35,000 for the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then when the contract broke apart, because you all wanted your own contract, you wanted to break away from the county.
We was not...
Because we don't get along too well for some reason, and I'm not sure what that is, but I went along to get along to try to keep everybody happy. And guess who's not happy now? Me. This whole separation of contract has caused me more work, because now I have to come here, I have to prepare two budgets, I have to present from you, and I have to present from the county. When we had the inter-local agreement, I went to one. The county is behind this. I'm having the issues here.
So, let, so you expect this council to approve $50,000 for the animal shelter with no documentation of what kind of revenue that you have? Is that what you're asking?
No, and I have, that's not true. I have given you documentation prior. I have documentation now, and you don't want to see it. You didn't ask for that documentation.
Well, the mayor told me he was, he had sent you some emails and stuff. I can't speak for Chris because he's not here.
Well, and that's, and that's...
I think you have to trust this council that in nine months, you're going to get the rest of your money. I think you've just, that's, I can't, I'm one vote...
We'll play it by ear, I guess.
I'm one vote, Molly.
We'll play it by ear, I guess.
I would, I really believe you'll get it, but who knows? Like you said, we don't know what's going to happen the next nine months financially.
I don't either.
We don't either.
And you know, the sad thing is, is these animals don't either.
That's true.
And they don't have a voice.
I'm hearing...
But we keep getting stuck with the piles of mess that's going on, and there's one that I'm sure that you all are aware of that happened over the weekend that's caught, that's going to cost the shelter.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Who do I turn in the documentation to, and when do I, I guess, do I set up a meeting with Chris, or do I set one up with you?
The mayor. The mayor requested the information.
And the mayor's not here tonight.
He is out of town.
He's out of town.
When can he get back?
We will, I really honestly believe this council will fund your other money.
I hope they do, because if they don't, then services will be cut.
I understand that.
Just like, just like everything else. Services will be cut, and then the residents in Tell City are going to be upset.
I understand. Anything else? Jim Carter?
Is this on the, is this on the budget hearing?
I was going to say, is he here, wait a minute, is he here to talk about the budget?
No, 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 no.
No. We're going to make...
This is strictly budget.
Strictly budget.
I think you're under, you're going to be under comments of citizens.
Any other comments from citizens on the budget?
Hearing none.
I hear none.
Then you reconvene your council meeting.
We will reconvene a regular council meeting from the budget. That was the public comment, which we have to do under law.
Correct. That was the public hearing.
Now, we're up to comments of citizens on our regular...
Now, we're up to comments of citizens. If anyone would like to speak.
Sorry, Jim, you're up now. You're getting your steps in today.
Well, I'm here to actually, did you all get a packet, dirty? Got the packet? Okay. Basically, what I'm here, really in a nutshell, is for the last six months, I've been working on trying to get different legislatures to get rid of a law that we don't need, and that, you'll see, it's County Option 6-9-39, County Option Dog Tax. And basically, what I really want to ask you to, any one of you, it doesn't take one or two, when I'm finished with this, if you get a chance to, please call Steve Bartels, and when I finish with it, you'll understand, ask him something for me, because I'm trying to get Steve to sponsor a bill to either modify or get rid of this, this County Option Dog Tax. And I need help from, I've already been to Crawford County, been to DuBois County, been to Spencer County, to the commissioners, to the council, and now I'm going to the cities, all the cities, to request the city boards to please contact Steve Bartels and sponsor this bill that I've been asking for. And basically, as you know, the bill, the bill is, was created in 2006. It was to, was to supplement what used to be the trustee's job of collecting the dog tax for the county. Well, they, they were trying to modify and trying to actually remove at the time, we're trying to move, remove trustees, but in order to do that, they had to have a law to incorporate how they were going to collect those dog taxes. So, they created two, in 2005, active in 2006, County Option Dog Tax. The problem with that is, if you look on your, on paragraph nine there, that's the main problem. When they created that, they also stated that each county, in order to be able to license, had to pass the County Option Dog Tax, and that's on paragraph nine, which is your last page there. The problem with that is, they not only handcuffed the counties, they handcuffed the cities. Because here's the situation, just like what's talked right now. Tell City has its own problems. Canilton has its own problems. Troy has its problems, and the county has its problems. If you have a certain, say, say you had a major problem with dogs, just like this week, you did have a major problem, and guess who was there? The shelter people were there, okay, to take care of that problem. The situation is this, you don't have certain revenues to actually take care of the problems that have started and increasing with cats and dogs, and we need something different. And what I'm guessing is this, if you, if you ever want the option to, the option to be able to license, I'm not talking about taxes, to license dogs, you either have to remove paragraph nine or get rid of that whole, that whole County Option Dog Tax completely. Now, the problem with trying to get rid of it completely is Purdue University has a lot of power, and they're getting revenue through that, and by, if you say, let's eliminate, Purdue's going to say, whoa, and they've got so much power, you're not going to remove it. But if you remove paragraph nine, which is senseless anyway, you've gave the cities and the counties the ability to still license. And the licensing is going to bring, if we license, if you license, or Canilton license, it's going to bring in much-needed revenue to help other animal issues. And there's many other animal issues. So, I, what I'm trying to do is ask you, is ask you to please contact, Steve Bartels and ask him to sponsor, that's the whole purpose of me, is trying to get other people to help me push Steve Bartels to sponsor this. I've been working on this, actually, I've been working on it since 2006, because it's a ridiculous law, and I think it needs to be removed. But if we can just modify that, so I'm going to, I'll be with Steve next week, so I'm hoping that all of these different locations that I've been to, that the people have called in, so there's enough energy for him to consider that, he's, he's got a person, a legislature from the Elkhart, that he thinks may co-sponsor this. But I've been, you know, like I said, I've been trying to see all the councils and all the commissioners and councils in the counties. So, please take a look at that, read that over, and you'll see how ridiculous it is. And by the way, if you'll see the page where it shows how many, how many counties actually are using that, the...
It's on the back, yeah.
Yeah. The state sent me the information of the counties that were supposed to actually have passed the County Option Dog Tax.
Ten of them.
And so, I called every one of them. Three of those counties are not, even though it's, the controller has it, so the state is behind on that. There's only seven counties, as far as I know. There are, so seven out of 92 counties. Why have a law if very few percentage of people are using it? It's, it's silly. So, let's get rid of the County Option Dog Tax or modify it, and then you, if you ever have trouble, then you can license. And there's a second reason for this. Well, Canilton has a major cat problem. I was at with the mayor of Canilton today again. They're coming to a point where something drastic's going to have to happen, and, and so they could tax, and they could license cats. But can you imagine if Canilton passed a license for cats and not dogs? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, it's, this whole thing is going to unlock it, so there can be revenue, so whenever you guys are looking at your budget, you say, hey, we're getting revenue for licensing that can help the shelter. And that's, if we don't do this, the shelter cannot keep surviving with what they've got because their costs are going up, they have limited space, and every time they have a major problem in the shelter, for instance, and I'm not going to use a certain group of animals, got sick, they could, at that time, they couldn't take any animals, they couldn't, they couldn't take any, or put any out, so now they're locked in, they can't do anything, and they're getting all these calls, or these people that can't understand because, but they can't say, hey, we've got this disease, and all of our animals have it, and we cannot, we cannot put any animals in, we can't take any animals out until this is solved. And as soon as that's a problem, somebody will bring in one of these cats or dogs that's got this disease, and guess what?
Starts over again.
They have to, they, they don't have to, but they take this and do the best of their heart, and now we got these diseases they have to control. And that's a lot of money and a lot of time, and they've got four people to do that, so...
I understand. I think the council is aware and...
Charlie Baumeister came before the council earlier this year. Charlie's here.
Yeah.
And presented it. And, and I did some research, and Jim, you've hit the nail absolutely on the head. We couldn't adopt the proposed ordinance because of section nine of that code provision, because the county had not adopted a county in, a county dog tax, and therefore, we couldn't adopt any type of licensing ordinance.
Yes.
I agree with you, and I'm, I'll be happy to call Bartel's office and tell them...
Actually, I've been working, I'm working at different counties trying, and this is again, I'm not going to name the county, but one county has illegally collected over a million dollars through licensing that they didn't even know that they were illegally doing. And I can't go, I can't go to a big newspaper and say, hey, this is a problem, because all of once these people are, that have, all of these shelters and all of these revenues that are coming in, now all of once they'd have to give them back. So, I've got a problem of being able to go to the media that I wanted to go to and have to lock this into a different situation now. So, I'd please read that, and I hope one or two of you, or three of you, please call Steve Bartels and tell him that you support...
I'll send him an email. I got his, it's all public information for his email address and all.
It's going to, it's going to help everybody.
It would certainly be helpful if they just took out the requirement that eliminates our ability to set up a licensing ordinance.
Right, nine. Paragraph nine.
It would not take much, and I don't think it would hurt Purdue in the process if they'd just make one little amendment.
They, Purdue, did you see the amount, did you see the amount that Purdue, that was sent to Purdue? It was nothing.
Yeah. Not even a line item in their budget.
So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please keep helping and start thinking about anything about the animal issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anything, any other people want to speak?
There's Charlie.
State your name, please. We know what we need for the people watching.
Charles Baumeister, 511 10th Street here in Tell City. I represent this council on the Perry County Animal Welfare Board. So, there's two parts to this. One, going back to the ordinance, we had a meeting, we voted to get rid of all the parts of the permits and licensing. We're also adding two new members to the board, that Troy will have representation, and also a county, a resident of Perry County, anywhere in the county can, can put in to be appointed to this board. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll receive that. The county attorney has it, he's making the changes. We'll present that to the county commissioners, and then I will present it to you. The main reason I was here tonight was, I was notified, since I am on this welfare board, about a week ago, about a situation here in Tell City, where there were 24 dogs in a house. And... And if you read, and I'm sure your contract is just like the county's with the shelter, that they are not animal control. They're not supposed to go out and pick these animals up, but these two ladies are so good-hearted, they do it on their own. They took these 24 dogs. That doubled the capacity of what they had in their shelter. So when you double it, you also double the cost for the food, the veterinarian bills. Some of these animals are gonna have to be put down. And my concern about being on the animal control board is, the city, we need to do something, because I guarantee you, ladies and gentlemen, that there are more homes here in Telford City that have a lot of dogs in there. We do not have a game plan on what to do. Who's responsible to pay for this? If they're euthanized, who's going to pay for that? This is something that we should be very concerned about because of the disease. I cannot believe that, that house, there were no more complaints than there were with 24 dogs in there. Now, there were a lot of factors involved. Mental health, one gentleman was mentally unstable. Another person was arrested. That's how they got involved. But another group was notified back in May, and they were inside this house, and there were only seven dogs at that time. And they interbred.
Oh, my God.
We've got to get the information out to people that, there are people that are having hard times in this community. They can't afford to feed their family, it's hard to feed animals. We have the resources. We need to get that information out. The shelter, the Humane Society, will help these families spade or neuter their animals. I really, and I'm the first one to say, I hate that government has to get involved and put limitations on animals, but we're gonna have to do something, because this is not going to be the last of this. And we need a game plan that, when it happens again, this is how it's gonna be handled. So, it just happened to happen here in Telford City. I know the mayor's been involved, trying to work on some, some funding, so the ones that happen to be euthanized could be euthanized. But let's think about this. If it happens in Cannleton and Troy, they don't have the money. They can't find the money, so this is, this is going to be a county problem. So I, I recommend that this council, you know, put their heads together and try to come up with, help with their attorney of some sort of game plan, and I would be more than willing to sit in and put in my word, and I'm sure these two ladies with the shelter would.
Charlie, I think you told me that you put in a request to the council to fund an animal control officer.
Yes.
And what did they do?
Basically, I-
The county.
The county. I put it into the county.
What did the county?
No, no, you asked the county council.
Yes. Okay, and it was in the Commissioner's budget, it was cut. But I listened to the meeting, and they said there was no plan. Well, basically, my request was X amount of dollars for X amount of hours for a part-time animal control. They want more of a plan, so I'm working on that. We have the shelter, that's the foundation. We need the ordinance, and then go for the animal control officer. My understanding is, what we asked, it was a little over 15,000, that the county council took that and moved it over into the animal shelter, to help fund them. So.
Okay.
And we also asked for additional funding to get someone licensed to be able to euthanize locally, because it's costing quite a bit for them to transport to have animals euthanized. We're not just, we're talking about animals that are sick, or there's no way they're ever gonna be adopted. They have some dogs that have been up there for a year. So unfortunately, we, you know, I hate to say that I love animals, but there comes a point that you have to make some drastic decisions.
Have any discussions gone on as far as adding on to the shelter, making it bigger, enlarging it?
You know, they, half of it's being rented out, and that income from that is going to a restricted fund for that building. Because the building is owned by the county, and the county leases it to the shelter for a dollar a year. So they do have other equity into the shelter besides just the 50,000. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I didn't really come here to gripe, but I saw on channel, on television, one of the local stations in Evansville had a report about the 24 dogs. So I'm sure you will be hearing about it.
Yeah. I've heard about it.
All right, thank you.
Any other citizens would like to comment? If not, we'll continue on with committee and board reports.
Okay.
Larry, you can go first.
Okay, thanks.
And Partners in Pride, if you wanna include that, knock 'em out both same time.
Oh, wow. I did attend the, September the 16th, the mayor had a ceremony here in council chambers, recognizing employees for years of service, and I did attend that. On September the 17th, Telford City Electric Department had a dedication ribbon-cutting of the new JB Land substation, which I wanna compliment them again on completing that project and having the foresight to be able to budget money over a long period of time and pay for that project without borrowing any money, so that substation was put online, and hopefully is working now, Andy, is that correct? On September the 19th, we had a planning commission meeting where Nana's Cook House LLC made an application for a conditional permitted use for home occupation in an R2 district. The planning commission did make a recommendation that was to go to the appeals board, correct, Jeff?
Boards on Appeals, yeah.
Appeals board has acted on that yet or not?
I think set for hearing on the 21st.
Okay.
Favorable recommendation to the VZA for approval.
Okay. So that was done on September the 19th. On the 21st, I attended the Farm to Table event, supporting the Perry Central FFA program and the Telford City Culinary Arts Program. It was well-attended, it was a great event. September the 23rd, I attended a historical society meeting where Mark Lafflin made a presentation about air traffic control on 9/11/2001. He was an air traffic controller in Indianapolis for 30-some years, I believe, but he was on duty that day, and it was a very interesting presentation. On October 4th, I stopped by the open house that the Telford City Water Department had down at the depot, explaining the project that we've got going on to replace lead and galvanized service lines over the next 12 months and 200 and-
Just know that number, 234. 54, wasn't it?
254?
254.
250-some homes in a designated area, so I was able to attend that. They've got a second open house-
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
From 6 to 8.
From 6 to 8.
And that will also be held at the Telford City depot.
And all the, all the owners in these homes have received a letter, so they're aware of it, and identifying what's going on, but they were then invited to attend these open houses also. That same day, on October 4th, I stopped by the dedication ceremony of the new Habitat for Humanity House at 538 10th Street. That was constructed, that home was constructed by Perry Central School students, who actually constructed that in their facility out there, then it was trucked to Telford City and by crane, it was put on the basement, which was constructed. Beautiful house, they did a, did a great job on that. And a lot, I think, was actually donated to Habitat by the city. It was a lot that we had recovered through the-
We sold it to them for a dollar.
Yeah, okay. Through the NSP program, I think we'd acquired that property and tore the, the old house down. So it was a great event, I was glad to see them be able to complete that project. And my partner in pride for October, Steve and Becky Owen at 401 10th Street. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Larry. Brian?
Okay. I also attended the planning commission meeting that Larry was at, over at Nana's Cook House, which is gonna be, I think it'll be a good addition to give people's choice in town, with different cuisine. I also wanted to congratulate Andy's crews going down south for the hurricanes, taking care of the people down there, their electrical needs. You're like a co-op, aren't you, Andy, and do you ever help them like that?
Yes, we have other municipalities.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a good deal, and I think, I've heard a lot of people talk about that, so that's a pretty good deal also. And Gerald, my partner in pride for October, I know Mayor Cale wanted to, said something about having a Halloween theme, this is as close as I can get.
I bet I know who it is.
Gary and Joyce Staff, 2120 Franklin Street. They had a bunch of pumpkins and those marigolds and all, it was really pretty, they were different colored, and I thought that would be a good, good choice for this month, so.
Okay.
That's all I've got, Gerald.
Thank you. Philip?
Yes. I watched a bunch of county meetings, or their budgets and whatnot. Some of them got pretty animated. And, well, I don't wanna repeat anything else, but Partners in Pride is Tony and Rhonda Holland.
Okay.
They're on 10th Street.
Okay.
I forgot to get their address.
It'd be the 800 block, that's all I know.
I know the one you mean.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes. First, my partners in pride, Kathy and Clark Blackford at 1637 12th Street. Beautiful house, they've already sown their fall grass for next year, decorated a little bit for Halloween. I can identify with the problem with the pets, or feral, wild, whatever. Some of my constituents are, just every time I talk to them, they bring it up. And the board and the city, like in one case, there's been like 50 cats, like 24 dogs. Well, this was 50 cats coming and going. The lady was unable to care for them, but she wouldn't keep them out either. She'd leave the front and back door open. The city would fine her, she wouldn't pay it, she wouldn't make any changes. I think it happened three times. So asking for some kind of plan is, it's easy to complain about, but hard to, hard to deal with.
The current enforcement regimen will not solve the problem, I'll tell you that right now. It will not.
Yeah, right. That's it.
Okay.
You know what it does to a house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know exactly what he's talking about. My partners in pride is David Lamar at 901 12th. He originally had that house remodeled inside and out. His handicap, got a, he put a handicap ramp, new siding, side, or windows, done a great job with that, and he appreciates that. I don't have Chris's, he didn't say anything, so.
Didn't tell me either, so.
I don't, yeah, he didn't tell me. But-
Didn't ask him either.
He didn't mention it to me either.
I believe Connie is coming up, don't we have an insurance, we have to sign up?
Open enrollment.
Open enrollment will be November the 7th.
November, I think it was.
But we don't have any numbers or anything yet, but the employees have been notified, that's when the meeting will be.
November 7th.
Yes.
Okay.
But we should get numbers in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So that we can get all our documentation and all our paperwork ready for the employees.
Okay. In case the community, I'm sure they know it, at the Armory, which is owned by the county, proud to say we have a baby box, which is installed. The lady come down from upstate one day last week and trained on it, and went through how it works, and we hope we never use it, but it's there. And when, when that thing is tripped, within a minute, people start getting calls. And different agencies, fire, I mean, not fire, but ambulance, police, rescue, EMS, will get, get that alarm. We have an alarm at something, something, I think it's 38 something Telford Street, but that's, that's the baby box. There is cameras there, so, you know, we know what's going on, they can review that. So it's a good thing, it's a good thing for the community, we just hope we never use it. But if we do, then this lady went through what we can do and what we can't do legally, if, myself as a first responder, my responsibilities and so forth. It was a good program. I don't have anything else offhand, and Chris didn't, everything else is on the agenda, I believe we're going to discuss.
That's the whole business.
You have anything, Connie?
No, I don't.
Jeff?
No legal report.
No legal report. We'll move down to new business. First item is the Telford City Electric Board of Directors' Appointment. We have received two letters. You should have received two letters, I did, I think you all probably got them due. One of them is from Dwayne Poole, which is on the board today. He would like to be reappointed. And then we have a letter from Mr. Eric Martin, which lives at 77 Lehman, is that how you pronounce it, Larry?
Yes.
Drive. And he has a long resume here, he is highly qualified to serve on that board. I know that the electric superintendent's here, and if you have any comment or anything, Andy, we're welcoming.
We're talking about the council appointment?
Yes. Yeah, the mayor has reappointed Joel Don as his appointment.
I think it should've been three letters, but, yeah, I don't know Eric, I can speak for Dwayne, though. Dwayne's been on the board for eight years. I can tell you, he's one of our six members that truly has the community at his heart. He cares deeply about the community and cares about serving the community. And my three years here have had absolutely no issues with Dwayne. He has the same vision as I do for the department, to move it forward and help keep rates low for our citizens. And I personally, maybe a little biased, would ask that he be reappointed, but that's just with not knowing Eric at all, but.
Yeah.
I didn't get the resume, so.
Yeah. I think Eric owns the salt room, is that right?
He does.
If I've read this, he was in the military, and he's highly qualified, so.
I might clarify to make the decision a little easier. Maybe. According to Jeff, and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we still have to make appointments to the electric board based on political balance.
And I looked that up since then, and I was mistaken. They do not, they're not required to be political.
They're not required.
They're not required to be political.
Well, you keep going back and forth.
And I apologize.
That changed at the beginning of this year or last year?
I think it was the beginning of last year.
Yeah, I'd actually reached out, Larry, to Jeff, you know, had a meeting when I think the mayor announced it.
Yeah.
I was like, that was the case, but it's actually, that changed, I think it was January last year?
I think it was January of last year.
Yeah.
So, and I was just wrong.
So I threw you a curveball, Larry.
Thank goodness I haven't memorized every one of those statutes, or I'd be a walking, I'd be a walking book of boredom.
Then I can't make this simpler, because if it would've required political balancing, then Eric would not be qualified.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say.
It does, it does not, it does not otherwise, it's not otherwise required.
Okay.
It used to be, but I said that one.
Yeah. I don't know either candidate's political party.
Well, I do, I went and looked today.
So, I didn't do that. Anyway, the-
So then, Connie, would you make a note then, and please take that off of this appointment sheet?
Yes. We will do that.
Thank you, that'll make it easier for me as well, I don't have to look it up again.
Four years.
Does any of the other council members have any- Does any of the other council members have any letters or recommend names they'd like to bring forth? I have none. I think we did receive, I believe we wanted a letter, if I remember, wait, Chris advertised, or we advertised it.
Correct. He did ask for letters, and you did receive, you know, the two letters that you were looking at, and then he, the mayor did appoint, lost it here, Joe Dom, and we did have a letter from him also.
Okay. So the floor is open for nominations for the council's appointment to the Tell City Electric Board.
Based on his requests, and his service, prior service, and his requests and the recommendation of the superintendent, I would make a motion that Dwayne Poole be appointed for a new four-year term.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations?
I'll tell you, you look at, I know what Andy said, but you look at that Martin voice.
Yeah.
Pretty stellar.
Pretty stellar.
I mean, I think maybe...
If nothing else, we definitely want to keep that one on file.
Yeah.
This is pretty, this is pretty dicey here.
I agree.
And we can keep it on file also if any other appointments would come up too, you know.
He's exactly the kind of folks that we want getting involved with the city.
Yes.
There's no doubting that resume.
It's just really impressive resume, my goodness.
It is.
If there's no other nominations, we'll vote on the motion on the floor. Hearing none. Motion is to appoint Dwayne Poole to another four-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carried four to one.
And I, following up with what Connie said, I highly recommend that we keep Eric's letter and his resume, because there are recurring appointments on various boards, and if he wants to get involved, he jumps off the paper as somebody we want involved.
You've got to write, you have some votes.
Yes, he does. Okay, going on, item B, local income tax revenue bond. And Ms. Berger?
Yes, we have Andrew here with Baker Tilly that is going to explain all of this to the council members. I think the mayor talked to a few of you about it, but Andrew will be able to explain all of this.
See Andy?
If I could, I've got some numbers I'd like to just pass down. Your copies there. So, good evening, council members. Andy Mouser with Baker Tilly. We serve as financial advisor. Do you have a few copies of numbers being passed around? Definitely glad to answer any questions here this evening. I did want to go through those quickly, but this is really the first of two steps. So we would be here, obviously, at your October meeting, and then return for your November meeting. And there would be two ordinances. One would be a bond ordinance, and then the second would be an additional appropriation ordinance. Those would both be introduced at your meeting here this evening, and then you would hold a public hearing at your November meeting, and then be able to take action, if you so wish, on those ordinances at the November meeting. But this would be for the issuance of a local income tax bond that would really serve two purposes. One, that would provide upfront proceeds that could be used for various projects. And then two, by issuing debt payable from both your economic development income tax and then your public safety income tax, it would serve to protect those distributions that you currently receive through the next two-year period. So obviously, you do not have control over the local income tax distributions, but you are very reliant on those. So by issuing debt, the state does give you the ability to essentially protect those distributions going forward.
What, what do you mean protect? Like, could they not change it then, or...
Correct. So the distributions that you would currently receive could not be reduced.
I want it to add money.
So it really would protect? Okay.
Yeah, correct. And I can, I'll show you that here in the numbers. Happy to go through those quickly. I'll actually maybe flip first to the fifth page. So much like any other community in the state, you have what's known as a constitutional bet limit, and that's 2% of one-third of your, of your tax base. Your tax base is 250 million, so you can issue through traditional property tax or income tax bonds up to 1,668,000. So in your ordinance, we've provided for the issuance of up to 1,665,000, which would be a two-year bond, again, to protect the local income tax. I'll then maybe flip back to the second page. You can see here, it would be a $1.6 million bond that would provide about 1.5 billion in proceeds, so that's money that would be available prior to the end of the year, and then could be used for projects in much the same way that your, your public safety and economic development income tax distributions are used currently. That's, again, just money that would be available from bond proceeds. And then on page three, you will see what would be an anticipated repayment. So bonds would be closed in December of this year, and then you would have four payments across the next two-year period. So you'd have a final payment in January of 2027, that would be paid from local income tax that you would receive in 2026. Your ordinance allows for a maximum interest rate of up to 5%. Currently, what we're seeing in the market, and the Indiana Bond Bank has a program that's great for financings of this type, their current rate would be right around 3.3%. So we're showing 375, just to be conservative here. We can see total interest of about $90,000, and then that would result in an annual payment of about 660 in 2025, and then 1.1 million, just under 1.1 million in 2027. And then I'll flip to page four. What you'll see there is really how that would serve to protect your local income tax distributions. So for 2024, you currently receive about 888,000 from your economic development distribution. Current estimate for 2025 is that should increase to about 900, just under 926,000. For your public safety, you currently receive 429,000. Current estimate, which should be certified soon for 2025, is 446,000. So between the two, currently receiving about 1.4 million in local income tax distributions. And then you'll see for 2026, that annual payment would be right around 1.1 million, so that results in debt service coverage of 125%. So for every dollar of debt service, you'd have $1.25 coming in between the two local income tax distributions. Your ordinance does make reference, and then actually state statute also protects that your, your distributions cannot be reduced to the point that it would cause your coverage to fall below that 125%. So this would essentially lock in your distributions for 2026 especially, and any action on 2025 would have to be taken here within the next few weeks.
Yeah.
So you do have, again, the two ordinances, the bond ordinance is a bit more lengthy, but, and then also the additional appropriation ordinance. I'd be glad to answer questions on those tonight, or certainly if it's helpful, attend your November meeting as well.
I understand the interest expense and the processing fees for the bond and stuff is costing us money, but one of the, one of the benefits of this is that it moves up when we get the money. I mean, we're going to be getting two years of money immediately.
Yes.
So that we're able to proceed on some projects.
Projects on the books will remain on the books with no danger that we won't be able to fund.
And we can proceed on those projects sooner than, in theory, and probably realistically, if we waited two years from now, those projects would cost us more money.
Correct.
I can't see prices going down on, on construction projects or anything, so.
I think Andy's department is unique in that respect.
Yeah, so, so it's a, you know, it's a little bit of a trade-off. Plus, it does allow us to, and I think some of these funds are being used in the sports complex, which is...
Sports complex, the Tell Street, Streetscape Project.
Highway 66.
Highway 66 sidewalk project. There's, we've included a couple of vehicles.
I've included two police cars in it.
Police vehicles in there.
In the bond, to be paid out of the bond.
We, we don't have a shortage of projects, put it that way.
And there's really no limitation on the bond proceeds, other than it does need to be capital, so things like purchase of police cars and construction of projects is, as long as those were expenditures, it could otherwise be spent out of your...
What is the length of these bonds for, like, terms? Do you know what I mean?
Two years.
Two years.